We're going to move right into the agenda and go to city managers' report on issues raised at prior meetings.
Not this time.
Special events, Lisha?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There are two applications and two wedding applications before you this evening. The first is Rockin' in the Park on July 21st to be held at Springwood Park. Second is Fitness in the Park on July 31st in Sunset Park. And there are two wedding applications, one for September 15th, the other for September 21st. Are there any questions?
Wait a second. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisha.
Review of this evening's agenda with the Board of Manager. Whoever you are. I don't know. I just for a second.
Resolution 2018-238 is a special event application. Resolution 239 is an insertion of special revenue, a cleaning communities grant which we receive. It's Chapter 159 of the State Code. It allows us to spend and proceed and spend the money as it's an amendment to the budget. We receive approximately $30,000 a year cleaning communities grant. It's based on recycling. Resolution 240 is a dedication by rider to the budget. A dedication by rider is a dedicated revenue stream. This is actually for the Bangs Avenue parking garage. This is a cleanup item that the city never actually dedicated away to receive the money from the state for the revenues from the garage. Nothing changes internally. Resolution 241 is releasing a performance bond. Resolution 242 is, as I was just agreeing with the Passaic Valley Sewer Commission for the disposal of sludge, there is no increase in the cost from the existing services. Resolution 243 is to do online tax sales in November. The state had changed, they were in a pilot program where there was only one company that was eligible under the state to do online tax sales. They changed that, they opened it up for more companies, resolicited proposals. This was the only one that responded. This is the same one that we used for the last two years. Resolution 244 is accepting the donation of a parkland. And 245 is cleanup and other items of the contract for paddleboards, high accident, for dealing. Is there any questions on the consent?
No, we should give the guy a proclamation or something to give us the parkland.
Where's the parkland?
It's going to start on the west side and then move around, but we're not going to get it.
We have a proclamation. It's like a $15,000 parkland.
We had somebody give two bike racks worth $18,000. We'd give a proclamation. I'll give everybody a proclamation.
Yeah, we'll give them a proclamation.
We'll be proclamations.
Individual resolutions. 246 is a resolution approving the payment of bills. Resolution 247 is a resolution appointing a land use attorney for the city. Resolution 248 is appointing an alternate city prosecutor. The alternate city prosecutor is in emergent need. Our regular prosecutor was just appointed to governor's council, so we needed someone to pick up some of our ongoing cases.
That would be another alternate prosecutor.
The alternate of the alternate.
Because our regular prosecutor is Jimmy Broden.
Jimmy who?
Jimmy Broden.
Jimmy.
Everybody out there in TV land.
Resolution 249 is change order number five for Fourth Avenue improvements. Resolution 250 is a typo. It's that should be change order number six, it's not change order number nine. That's my best hangers on the keyboard. Resolution 251 is amending the beer parking requirements for the Bangs Avenue garage, which is the first Saturday each month during the time period of July through September is free. Resolution 252 is adopting the personnel policy with the changes that we're discussing in those seconds. Resolution 253 is liquor license renewals. 254, 255, 256, and 257 are various liquor license renewals. For introduction is an ordinance for a right-of-way 545 Lake Avenue. As you'll recall, this is defeated and brought back to include a payment of the right-of-way area. For second reading, 2018-21, this is requesting to be tabled. This is the affordable housing development fee ordinance where Fred is working with Clark Hens to get to approval. Resolution 218-27 is amending the capital improvement program. We're requesting, do remember, we're requesting not to purchase the drone, but to order additional police body worn cameras and speed trailers. And then Resolution 28 amends various traffic aspects of the city code. Is there any questions?
I have a question about the parking garage. Are we advertising somehow that it's going to be free? Do we have a plan?
The chamber is working with us, and then there'll be the various normal releases.
Okay.
And then I also emailed Jan and the downtown business merchants to help start getting the word out about the free parking from 155.
Can we put it on the electronic sign?
We could.
I'm doing it for two years.
Resolution 28.
Okay.
Any other question? Have you just still gone to paperwork? I want to make sure.
Yeah, because 2018-28, that's the second read, right?
Yes.
I don't believe it's in our package. You have it. I'm all for it now.
There's extra copies up there.
Okay, we'll get it. Next.
Matters by City Council?
I'd just like to remind everybody that the Fourth of July fireworks are at 9:00 on the Fourth and wishing everybody is safe and happy July 4th. Monday nights, I think you're outside. So just to remind everybody again, we have the Monday night free music series in Springwood, and we've got Wednesday night free concert series at Mogo, and Thursday night free concert series, Asbury Park Jazz Band outside of Convention Hall. Lots of free music.
This month is African-American Music Appreciation Month, and tomorrow night at the Asbury Park Public Library, the African-American Music Heritage Project, which is a project of individuals in the city who are working to preserve the music of Springwood Avenue, are presenting their project, and we have a film that's been created with the help of Mike Sedano of Showroom. So we're inviting everybody to come out, share your memories, get a chance to do a exhibit, and also if you have photos of memorabilia, please bring it with you. We'd like to scan it and make copies, and we're keeping it. It's going to be stored in the Bruce Springsteen Museum at American University, so we're looking for as much information as we can possibly share with us. So please come out tomorrow night, Public Library, 7:00. It's from 7 to 9. Thank you.
Michael?
There's been a request by one of the members of council to amend the Springwood Avenue sunshade to a more multipurpose weather shade. That would require changing the contract with suburban and the bond ordinance. So I need to know if we should move ahead with that or keep the existing sunshade as is.
Can you explain the difference?
The sunshade is realistically like a flat roof. It's flat, but once you start to add a structure to it for rain and weather, you need to have different structure. It needs to have some support. It can't be flat because the wood will just sit on it. It's pitch. It would change the footprint of the structure itself for the contract with suburban and the bond ordinance states sun structure, sunshade, and this would be more of a multi-weather establishment. So we'd have to amend the contract with suburban to be uniformity with what's going on and the bond ordinance.
Michael, is that roof, the sunshade as it is now, is that a solid piece?
No.
Okay. It was my concern, because I just saw it for the first time, and it was two pieces of material overlapping. And I thought originally the plan was to be able to protect musicians from both the sun and from rain, and this particular sunshade is not going to do that.
So just so you know, if you just put a flat roof on without it having some kind of a high pitch, you're going to completely dim the music sound, you're going to completely change what that sounds like, and it's going to cause problems with amplified music.
So I'm not, I'm just trying to get information. It's not something I'm saying we have to go with a different sunshade. I'm just trying to understand if it's going to work and do the job that we're looking forward to do.
Can we have an engineer look and tell us?
And I'm definitely not looking to spend more money.
Can we, should we have like an engineer tell us?
Well, that's suburban.
Okay.
They're going to charge you to look into it, they're going to charge you to redo the specs, and then they're going to charge you to go back out for our fees, and then the price is going to increase dramatically.
Well, I can ask them to, what gives the cost, because we have to amend the contract, to look at what a multipurpose would add would look like, where does it impact the acoustics of the music?
I say jokingly, but we should just go down to up like awnings and just buy an awning and roll it up and roll it down every time. It's like bad weather, good weather.
Well, that would work because an awning is soft and it.
Right. I mean, and it's going to be one hundredth of the cost. I say that jokingly, but running since you're paying another engineer to do something else, it's running up the fees. Ask them his thoughts about that.
I don't know enough about awnings or sound to make any decision on it.
I'd rather something stable. It was a fault.
I find something stable too. You're hitting with this with no information. I know you just got it, but I mean, what state, is it going to survive a hurricane strength?
That's how I would, I always recommend everything, a sustained weight of a category four.
Okay.
Aren't these supposed to come down at the end of the season?
But you don't know when something like, you're going to get that wind. You have to build it to the best quality.
I didn't know they came down at the end of the season.
Well, I don't know either, to be honest with you. So I'll talk to Kurt at suburban and see what the cost of being asked for. That's all I have.
Matters by the city attorney?
Just one item, and that is, as councils are aware, there were numerous noise complaints relating to the Festival of Life last night down in Bradley Park. The police department had a letter hand-delivered to the licensee today letting them know that the sound cannot exceed certain levels, and if it does, they will be required to stop the amplification, and if continued violations persist, they are subject to having their special event permit revoked with no further notice. That's where that stands right now.
Anything else?
If not, well, you will adjourn until 7:00. I'm going to call to order the city council meeting for tonight's July 27, 2018.
It's not July.
Oh, my God, June 20. June 27, 2018. Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall, Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please rise for a silent prayer, moment of reflection, please. Flag salute. Fledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 4, 2018, and posted on Bolden Board on the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. Have a motion to open the meeting to the public, please.
Move it.
Second. Each member of the public has three minutes to speak. When you come up to the mic, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Jan Sparrow, Second Avenue. Ico, I'm words bookstore on Cookman Avenue. And first of all, I'd like to say that over the past few summers, it's been good to see that we've had, I'm going to say, greater enforcement around the challenges with the bars and the kids in town. We've started noticing over the last few weeks that there is a big influx of, it seems like college students or that 20-year-old crowd, and by 8:00 on Saturday evenings, it's, the streets are tough, and it's really impacting or could impact greatly the individuals who want to eat at a restaurant early and walk around town or do some shopping. So we're closing because it's really uncomfortable. I left around 8:00 last Saturday, and being in the streets, there was a lot of noise, a lot of crowds, a lot of people pushing and shoving. So I'm here to say that I would hope, and I expect it will happen, that in fact, we will continue as a city and as a city council to really work hard to make sure that all the laws are enforced, that the police are visible, that we can continue to have a safe city in spite of the fact that we have so many young kids who have, and I don't even kids is what I call them because I'm really old, but they seem like that 20-year-old crowd or college students who are extremely rowdy, who push and shove, and by the way, who throw up on my front porch, who the newspapers that are on the front porch to Tri-City are messed with, who leave cigarette butts, beer bottles, cans on the front porch, because we have a little indented front porch, so they spend a lot of time, I guess, on that, in that space. So I'm here to say, please, to beg, help us make it a safe summer, and let's make sure that the retail people downtown have the opportunity to stay open later and feel comfortable, that our clients can feel comfortable without having to fight through these massive crowds of kids who are being somewhat destructive, loud, and very, it's a very uncomfortable experience, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Azle, Scott Azle, co-owner of Words Bookstore also. I live over on Second Avenue. I just want to, I'm going to back up a little bit with Jan said about the business, and as co-business owner with her, I do get very concerned for her and her safety and the safety of our other manager in the store at night because that has become an issue of closing late. And so even though there is this move in the downtown, we'd like to keep the stores open later, we're hesitant, and a lot of it depends on what's going on in the downtown, what the feel is. And very often, what we do day-to-day, week-to-week is we get a feel of, hmm, is there a lot of cra, what are the crowds like, what are they doing? And sometimes we just call it and close early. So that's, that's that part of it. But I also want to speak as a homeowner. I live over on Second Ave., and one of the things we know, and it's more than the summer, I think we become used to, not used to it, we're more aware of it during the summer, but when we bought our house here 11 years ago, I think like a lot of people that live here in Asbury, you think, okay, I moved to paradise, shut the door behind me, and that doesn't work that way. And we have a lot of people coming into town. One of the things we're aware of on our street on Second is that starting at 2:00 in the morning, and this is not just in the summertime, this happens even in, on weekends in the, in the winter, and that is at 2:00 in the morning when the bars close, the screaming, the yelling, the singing, the laughing, the bottles being broken is what wakes us up, and it's on a consistent basis. And so in terms of quality of life, I encourage the council to be on top of this and to also learn from people who are doing it right. So we do have the downtown, you know, the Beer Garden does a great, great job of policing very, very well and being aware of who comes and who goes. And so even taking kind of a nudge from her on what they have done over there and how well they have done it, because we want the downtown to be safe, we want stores to be able to stay open later, and for those of us living in this town, we want to have a night that we can sleep through the night and not be woken by drunken revelers. So I encourage the council in what you're doing and in the enforcement that has already been done. The police are phenomenal in terms of their response, but it's, this wave is getting bigger, and I think, you know, you all are trying to get ahead of it. I encourage you to continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Weiner, 601 Madison Avenue, speaking as a resident. I live in the Post Building, which is directly across the street from the House of Independence and a stone's throw away from the Ale House. Didn't throw any stones yet, but it's tempting. Friday nights, and again, this is all year round, between 1:30 and 2:30 a.m., raucous is really a good description, singing, chanting, and screaming goodbyes. There is really rarely that I can see a police presence and a strong security presence. So I think we need to do two things. Number one is to hire a shusher, and that would be somebody who goes, when the people come out to say, "Psh, people sleep here." So that's one thing. And we also have to stop people who come, who actually stagger, because I see it all the time, out of the Ale House. I'm picking on the Ale House because that's where, from my experience, most of my problems come. There are taxis and Ubers lining the streets on Cookman. Those are not concerned when they stagger into a taxi. I am concerned when they walk away and obviously drunk. I never see anybody stopped. I don't know what the law is or what the policies are when you see somebody actually staggering out of these places. So, and then one other thing, and I brought this up maybe a couple of years ago, and it's about fines. Belmar, I'm going to tell you what their fines are. Automatically, noise violation, $350. Urinating in public, $350. Alcohol in public, $350. Disorderly conduct, $350. Those are automatic fines that you pay if you get a ticket. I don't know what ours are. I tried to look it up online. The last I remembered, we were half price at $165. I don't know what we are now, but I certainly think we could discourage people from coming here instead of going to Belmar by increasing our fines if they're not already increased. So I really would like to know what our fines are. And again, I spoke about this a couple of years ago, and I don't know if anything happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you get us that information, Michael?
I'm emailing it to you now.
That doesn't help me.
You don't have your iPad up there?
No. I didn't meet right now. Tomorrow. I'm sorry, I need you to. Yes, sir.
Malcolm Navias Heaven Art and Antiques on Cookman Avenue and a resident of Emery Street near Eighth Avenue. First of all, the drinking doesn't only start in the evening or late evening. The kids who come around are drunk at 4:00 in the afternoon and 3:00 in the afternoon, and they're really disruptive to the, to the people who are coming by to shop. The people are not coming after dinner, although I've tried to stay open, but I'm scared. I'm actually frightened of us staying open on a Saturday night and a Friday night because I don't think it's safe for me. It's certainly not safe for the customers. And as for the urination and shitting and vomiting in our lobbies, that's on a weekly basis, and how many windows have been smashed on Cookman Avenue? The nail salon, Conover Agencies, the cigar shop, you name them, they've all been broken, all the windows up and down the street. It's really a disgrace, and the police don't do anything about it, and the, and the bars don't stop them. The bars don't stop them from drinking when they're drunk. It's really, it's really horrible, and it's really affecting our business very adversely. At this time of the year, in the summertime, we should be open, we should be staying open till 11:00 on a Saturday night. We can't. We cannot do it. And another thing is this thing that you have going down here at the, at the park and Bradley Park, I hear it from my house up until 10:00 at night. Yeah, I can understand every word they say. It's so loud, it's absolutely unbearable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Pavinski, 1607 Emery Street. Can you hear me? I can't hear me. Okay. Well, I'm in line with what's been said already. The only complaint I have about the revelers who are here is that most of their cans and their bottles wind up in our gardens, and that's a problem. Apparently, the garden on Cookman and Main is so popular that it's become a fornicating spot because we get a lot of used condoms there as well. So that's just to add to what we're experiencing with the people who are drinking in town, young people. The primary reason I'm here is to thank you, all of you, and especially the DPW. You've probably noticed in town that we have a few gardens, and they're all doing very nicely, and that's happening primarily because the DPW has worked with the Environment and Shadtree Commission like they never have before. It's just a hand-in-glove kind of experience. They have taken huge things out of gardens that we have no longer any use for, and they've helped us to plant new gardens. So I just want to say to you, thank you for the support you've given us for the small budget that we've been allowed, and hopefully we'll get a bigger budget in time, and we won't bury it in somebody else's budget line. And also just to make sure you guys know that we have some really terrific people at the, at the DPW, Department of Public Works, and it's been a real pleasure working with them.
Thank you very much, and you and the entire crew from the Environmental Shadtree Commission should get a proclamation.
Oh, don't start that.
I know you won't take it.
For the commission.
Okay. For the commission, okay.
For the entire, you would do one for the entire commission?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Done. We'll put on the next meeting.
Thank you for all the parts of beautiful.
Pleasure.
We should say the entire commission and volunteers. Because we have like such steady volunteers.
Yes.
18 volunteers.
Yes, we're going to have a full house next meeting. Thank you.
My name is Gene Maniola, 704 Cookman Avenue, resident and business owner there. Quality of life is, is what I'm here about. As a shop owner, we have similar problems that other people have mentioned, but in the mornings, we walk our dogs, and they're very interested in vomit, and there's a lot of it on the streets in the morning. And I do want to say, as someone who came from New York 10 years ago, there were a lot of clubs in New York that had similar problems where they over, people drank too much, they came out, they were loud, and often they had signs outside, and the bouncers also took some responsibility. They said, you're leaving this establishment out, please keep your voices down. There's a sign that says you're walking into a residential neighborhood, please keep your voices down. I don't know if it helps, I don't know if it helped there, but I think it would be something that could be recommended to the bars to take some responsibility for what's happening after people leave their space. And, I can't remember, but thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Glenn Massimello, 1206 Fourth Avenue. I want to thank the Asbury Park Police Department yet again because they're still parked in front of my home, so thank you guys. You know, unfortunately, over the last two weeks, the war painting's been done on Fourth Avenue, and it really hasn't addressed the never-ending speeding issue. I have two officers stationed today in front of the house and literally had the opportunity to speak with one of the officers, and by midday, he had pulled over between 20 and 30 vehicles for speeding. Now, if we take that on a monthly basis, that's between 600 and 900 vehicles speeding down Fourth Avenue, and that was just one officer. There happened to be two. The interesting thing was, they had literally just finished yesterday painting the new 25 mile an hour speed limit, about 75 feet from my home, about a lot away, and the officer was stationed in front of my home, and literally the car sped by, pulled him over about 40 miles an hour. After last week's meeting, I was told that a number of studies would need to be done to address the issue to maybe look at other traffic calming issues. Common sense dictated that I should reach out to the city and ask if there had been a study completed to actually stripe the street and finish the project as it is. After numerous emails back and forth with no real answer, I did get an answer finally, and I'd like to ask the city manager if he stands by this email reply. Mr. Massimello, this is city manager Michael Capobianco. There was no formal study done for the installation lines on the street nor is one required. Standards are those of the Department of Transportation. The city received DOT monies for the improvements and DOT design standards are what must be met. That included the lines. If we did not do the lines or remove. met. That included the lines. If we did not do the lines or remove them, we forfeit the DOT grant. More importantly, everything was done to DOT regulations and best practices. As Mr. Manzella stated below, we will begin looking at other traffic calming measures. Nothing can be changed until the project is closed out with DOT specifications. If we do any changes to the DOT-approved design, we are in violation of the DOT grant, and they can make us pay back the entire amount. I'd like to ask if you stand by that even. Yes. Well, interestingly enough, yesterday, I spoke with Tom Barron from the Municipal Aid Grant Authority who oversees this, and he essentially told me that was a bold-faced lie, that the city determined that those lines should be put in. The city voted on it and installed them. He also told me that the project does not need to be closed out. A simple change order needs to be submitted, indicating that because this measure is no longer working, we're choosing to take other opportunities. I don't understand what your question is.
Oh, my question is, Mr. Barron, were you giving any information?
I believe he did. That was awesome. Because I don't know him.
I can't either.
Bottom number, no? Not mine.
Okay.
We should have the speed traps that we have on Third. This isn't a question for you. This is a question for Michael. That gives us the data. We just got the data from Sunset. Can we put those on Fourth as well? Because in previous years, what we've noticed is that, maybe we should just put the speed traps on.
It's not speed traps. Amy's referred to as the small sign saying, "You're going 25 miles an hour." It registers every car, and the results from Sunset Avenue, which we can give you the dates and everything, where everybody said, "Everybody on Sunset Avenue was speeding," through a week's course of time, the average speed was less than 20 miles an hour for every car.
Yeah, I'm just relaying what the officer told me today. By 1:00 PM, he has to go to my house.
Tell them to sit in front of my house and leave you alone.
I just hate the absence in the neighborhood.
Oh, okay. Okay.
All I'm saying, Michael, is I know there's at least one, if not two, on Third. After they finish whatever amount of time that they need to do, I know you need to keep them there a couple of weeks. After they do that, maybe we can move them to Fourth, and then we'll have some real data on whether the speeding is as bad as people.
That's not it.
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Mark Zuddy. I live down at 801 Kingsley Street, on the corner of Asbury and Kingsley. And the conditions you're experiencing up on downtown are also extending down to the waterfront. 2:00, 1:00, it's absolutely miserable. We have sound machine on every night because you can't even keep, with the windows closed, you can't even deal with the crowds and the craziness that occur. The safety of the people going, coming out is very, very apparent that they are drunk. It's really a problem. We know there's a strong presence of police forces around Porta and the other areas, but once it gets a little bit further away, there's not a supervision there. So it really should be extended, as people said with the beer garden. That would be really helpful to kind of curtail some of the craziness. There's just no level of respect for the people that are coming to visit our town. It's really an atrocity on what people are allowed to do and deal with that. So it would be great if the presence could be elevated, especially Friday, Saturday nights, really all through the year. It's just, as I said, it's not just the summer. It just increases the level of craziness, but it's definitely there every weekend. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Mike Sedano, 1004th. I just want to say thank you for the extra police that you put on during the summer. They're helpful, but we still, at the theater, we still get every, or a lot of Friday and Saturdays, we're greeted with people using our vestibule for toilets. And I don't know where the police are when these things happen, but maybe there's a way that they can be stationed on the blocks so that they're just a deterrent from anybody using the streets as public lavatories. Just an idea, but thank you.
Thank you.
I remembered my question. May I have the rest of my three minutes?
Technically, you're not supposed to, but go ahead.
Okay. All it is, is we know that Asbury Park has the record for the most traffic tickets in the state. Are there statistics or citations for public urination, public drunkeness, things like that, that we're talking about fines for? But I'm not aware of any being issued to anybody. Are those statistics available? So it's a question.
It depends on how it's coded in court. That's all I'm adding.
We'll look into that. How we can get you the information. Thank you.
Nancy Sabino, 1004th Avenue, also co-owner of The Showroom. I, too, want to thank the police who have also been the parking police, who have been coming and helping out with people who still have trouble with the parking pay stations. As good as they've gotten, they're still always an issue. So the parking police have been very responsive, very helpful, and they've kind of calmed a lot of that problem that we used to have early on. Two, on Fourth Avenue, where I live, on the corner of Langford, there are no stripes yet for the 25 feet from the corner. Are those still being planned to be put in? Because it seems like everything is done, and we don't have those parking up to the corner. As we get closer to the summer, people are now parking as far away as Fourth Avenue to go to the beach. So the parking on the street's going to get much worse, and seeing around the corners is really problematic. So I'd just like to know, is that being planned, and we just haven't gotten there yet? Or, for some reason, are we not getting those stripes?
I don't know if the stripes are in the contract or not, but I know they're not done painting, for sure. Just because they haven't finished the bike things, the bike thing stops at the curb, and it has to go all the way to Ridge Avenue, and the showers haven't been done. And then the arrows with the showers haven't been done. So the painting...
Is not finished.
That type of paint, with the rain and the humidity, they had to shut down for, like, two weeks. So they're, like, two weeks behind, and that's why, instead of finishing the bike things, they did the 25 mile hours yesterday and today. So...
Even just the curb, if we could get the curb painted 25 feet from the corner, that would at least designate it.
Let's check on that and get back to you about that specifically. But I know we're not done painting the street.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close.
Hello, Peter Siegel, 7th Avenue. To echo the previous comment, I just wanted to ask, it inspired me to ask, also, in addition to the striping and painting of the corners to create sightlines and visibility, one of the issues that we experience on 7th Avenue is that, and I know that from the various chat rooms around on the internet, that people experience this on Heck and Web, is that visitors park right up and, like, block driveways or encroach on driveways, and it's, so we can't back out of our house. You know, the driveway, we can't pull in. It's like, I have to call the police and ask them to send a car over and ticket, or run the plate and call the owner. It happens weekly during the summer and then various other times throughout the year. So my question is, is there, can there be, or is it possible to consider there to be a striping of some distance? I don't know what the code provides for, on either side of, like, a driveway structure, so that, like, you gotta leave, like, three or five feet, or whatever the number is, so that cars just aren't, like, smushing my driveway like a pimple? Because that's what happens. And it happens all up and down the avenue. I don't know. But I know, again, on Web and Heck, they heard about it. They've complained about it before, and people just pull up really, really tight. I'm wondering if there's a way to incorporate that into the striping and to the code, or what the code says, if anybody knows.
I don't want to answer now. I'm going to put Mr. Manzella on the spot, but how about if we get back to you tomorrow? Because we striped Webb Street, and we got crucified at a parking committee meeting. It's like, why'd you put all that yellow there? Doesn't make it look residential anymore because of people elsewhere. We did it on Park Avenue because people complained, and people flipped out. So, you know, some people want it, some people don't want it.
You can't win.
I agree with you, like, fire hydrants. I mean, it doesn't have to be yellow, but people park in somebody's driveway, fire hydrants, or within 25 feet of a curb, they should be towed on the spot. Now, if that means we have to yell at them out so the police know where it is, I have no problem doing that. We'll look into it. That might get batted around, get in touch with you?
Yeah. I hit a cyclist two weeks ago, because there was just a van parked. You know, I'm backing out, and I just couldn't see anything that was oncoming. And, I mean, it was, there was no injury or anything. Thank you.
July 10th is the next parking committee meeting, and we would love for you to come and tell the committee you like it, because the people who've come said, "We hate it. Get rid of it."
Oh, all right.
So, but you don't have to come. We can relay your message.
Yeah, Michael's here. You can take this.
Okay.
You still know you're not on, or you're still...
Oh, he quit years ago.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Ernest Manoli, 400 D.L.A. Drive, Department 5D, Asbury Park in Jersey. I usually make the same statement, and I don't expect an answer, but the statement is that there are statistics of crime and problems in the state available. There are law enforcement statistics, FBI statistics, state police statistics, et cetera. And I always say the same thing. 565 municipalities, they rate them per capita for violence and crime, and for decades, and for 2017, we're rated number two.
Yes.
We're rated number two of 565 municipalities. So you were asking, is there any data available? And the city manager said, well, he'll check. Just Google 10 most dangerous places in New Jersey, and you could read the FBI, law enforcement, state police statistics of violent crime. We're number two. Okay, so that's my first statement. My second one is June 3rd, Pride Day Parade. Yes? I understand at 1:13 in the morning, a man was shot in the face on Langford. I also know that NICSOL did not report anything that day. I also know that that day, five hours later, the parade assembled right here. And I understand, Langford's not that far, right? So someone turns up in a hospital, shot in the face or neck, I'm not sure. You can't get any information. Shooter whereabouts unknown, weapon unknown. Loose somewhere, right? Now the parade is assembling. Why wouldn't the public be told? You had a governor come here, and NICSOL shows nothing except June 2nd, Asbury Park Police put on fog alert. Now, June 3rd, there's nothing from Asbury Park Police. How could that not wind up, since we're a 24-hour police agency? A notice to the public. Don't we have a right to know that there was a shooter? Unknown whereabouts. Someone is near death in a hospital. And we're inviting kids, and the public, and governor, and everyone to assemble right here, not far away. I just don't know how that happened. And that's why I always feel, how is it a city manager could say, "Well, you're a problematic resident. You call in too many crimes. You send too many emails, so I'm going to block your emails." Well, how about this? If there was no crime here, you wouldn't hear from me. See, so why is it that I should be blocked from emailing or reporting, or have the police say, "Whoa, you call too much?" Okay, well, why don't you stop the crime, and you'll never hear from me again. We're changing that so we're not second of 565. Maybe we're 330th. It's doable. It's only a mile and a half square place with only 15,000 residents. Now, if you would deal with the 30,000 people you invite in on weekends that cause most of the trouble, or the shooters that come from Neptune and other places into Asbury because they feel, hey, it's not well-lit, this is the place to commit crime, most of the police are at Johnny Macs or at Porta, and that's it. The rest is fair game. That's my talk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Lambert, 512 Second Avenue. Just in regards to the not being able to get out of your driveway. I lived in Weehawken for 20 years. Every driveway got a nice white box. That was it. And the city decided how big your box was, and that determined your driveway, and that told people where you could or could not park. It's pretty simple. You can look at Weehawken, how they did it. I had problems on Heck. I lived there. Now I'm on Second, very narrow to me to get out of my driveway, but that's all. It's just a friendly Weehawken, white box, no yellow, no striping. Anyhow, keep up the good work. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn and close.
Move it.
Second. Go. Yes.
All.
We'll move on to minutes. We have three sets of minutes this evening. Executive session minutes of June 12, 2018. I'm sorry, June 13, 2018. Workshop minutes of June 13, 2018, and the regular minutes of June 13, 2018. Have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Move on to consent agenda. Resolution 2018-230 is a resolution approving a special events application. Resolution 2018-239, resolution of the City of Asbury Park County in Monmouth, State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the 2018 budget of the City of Asbury Park, pursuant to NJSA 48, colon, 4-87, which is the Chapter 159, and this is for the 2018 Clean Communities Grant. 2018-240, resolution authorizing a dedication by Ryder to the budget of the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth, for parking garage pursuant to NJSA 48, colon, 4-39. Resolution 2018-241, resolution of the City of Asbury Park releasing performance bond for Block 2508, lap 2, 700 Bangs Avenue, and accepting the maintenance guarantee. Resolution 2018-242, resolution authorizing execution of share services agreement with Passaic Valley Sewerage Commission and Sledge Disposal. Resolution 2018-243, resolution approving an agreement with Services Contract with Broke Industries, Inc., doing business as NJTaxLeanInvestors.com for internet-based electronic tail tax sale processing for 2018. Resolution 2018-244, resolution accepting a donation of the parklet. And a resolution 2018-245, authorizing the City of Asbury Park to amend the contract for the rental of stand-up paddleboard, kayaks, and/or other recreational devices to the public in the designated area of D.L.A. Would anybody like any of those resolutions removed from the consent agenda? Hearing non-cabinet motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to individual resolutions. First one's 2018-246, resolution approving payment bills. Have a motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Chapman states from POs 18-01925, 18-00372, 18-01888, 18-00373, and 18-01880. I apologize. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-247, resolution approving land use attorney. Have a motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-248, resolution appointing alternate city prosecutor. Have a motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Is this brutal?
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-249, resolution approving change order number five for Fourth Avenue improvements. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-250, resolution approving change order notice is supposed to be number six for Fourth Avenue improvements. Have a motion to adopt, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-251, resolution amending the meter parking requirements for Bangs Avenue Garage in downtown area of the city, effective the first Saturday of each month during the time period from July through September 2018. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-252, resolution adopting personnel policy for 2018. Have a motion to approve what the changes as discussed in closed session.
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2018-253, resolution approving the 2018-2019 liquor license renewal. Please, I'd like to announce to the public that there's been two conditions that were added to every single liquor license. One is the security bar and staffer to clean the sidewalk and curbs adjacent to their properties nightly after the night, at the club night and the morning following the club nights. Any establishments must adhere to the Property Maintenance Code, Chapter 13 of the City Code. This goes for every single liquor license that is being approved this evening. Have a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-253, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Comments or questions from us?
We can't speak. It's not public.
She means from us.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Move on to Resolution 2018-254, which is a resolution approving liquor license with special conditions for DB Ventures LLC doing business as Johnny Max for 2018-2019 licensing year. This resolution has been amended per the discussions that occurred in executive session this evening. The amendment is to remove the condition 4.8 of the resolution. Do I have a motion to approve the amended resolution, please?
And 4.8 and number three?
Number three is just the whereas clause. 4.8 is the, or 8, 8.4 is the condition. That's the conditions in, and now they're... That was also removed.
Okay.
Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution 2018-255, resolution approving liquor license with special conditions for Bond Street Bar and Grill LLC, doing business as Bond Street Bar and Grill, Capital Line and La Doria for the 2018 and 2019 licensing year. This resolution is being amended per the discussion that occurred in executive session this evening. The amendment is condition one, that the licensee shall hire two off-duty police officers or one off-duty police officer and one security guard on Friday nights and Saturday nights and nights prior to holidays from 10:30 a.m. to 2:30 a.m. from the weekend after Memorial Day and through the weekend before Labor Day and all major holidays. Do I have a motion to approve?
Before we move that, I just want to clarify what you just said, Cindy. Are we talking about from, you said the weekend after Memorial Day?
The Friday before.
The Friday before Memorial Day weekend?
Correct.
Through the Monday of Labor Day weekend?
Correct.
So it includes both Memorial Day weekend and Labor Day weekend?
Right.
I can do it again. I don't know my befores and afters. You're correct. Do I have a motion to approve that amended resolution?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-256, resolution approving the liquor license with special conditions for Porta at Asbury Park LLC, doing business as Porta for the 2018-2019 licensing year. This resolution is being amended per the discussion incurred in executive session this evening. The amendment is condition 15, that the licensee shall have no new patrons after 1 a.m. Do I have a motion to approve this amended resolution?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-257, resolution approving the renewal of hotel liquor license number 1303-36/069001, which is held by 210 Fifth Avenue Venture Urban Renewal LLC, doing business as the Asbury Hotel for the 2018-2019 liquor license term. Have a motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinances for introduction. Ordinance 2018-29, authorizing the City of Asbury Park to convey and easement over certain portions of the public right-of-way area adjacent to the property located at 545 Lake Avenue, to be known as Block 3105, Lot 4.02. Can I have a motion to introduce this ordinance, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing will be held July 11, 2018 for this ordinance. We're on to second reading public hearing, 2018-21. Have a motion to table this ordinance, please?
Move to table.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
No.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-27, bond ordinance amending and supplementing bond ordinance number 2018-4, which provides for various 2018 capital improvements heretofore finally adopted by the City Council of the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey on February 28, 2018, to amend the description set forth therein. Have a motion to open this ordinance to the public, please?
Move it.
Second.
Seeing no public comment, have a motion to close, please?
Move it.
Second.
Have a motion to adopt ordinance 2018-27, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.